Can we open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Jared.
Commission Gannan.
Here.
Commission Waina.
Here.
Vice Chair Lee.
Here.
President Walbinski.
Here.
Commission Vlardi.
Yep.
All in attendance.
Thank you. Under announcements, public comment policy has changed for public comments. At the beginning of a meeting, you will be permitted three minutes on non-agenda items only. For action items, you may speak at the podium and be permitted one minute for your comments during that agenda item. An executive session was held prior to the meeting to discuss litigation and personnel. And right now, public comments. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to make a public comment? Mr. Orlando, one minute, please.
I am Dave Orlando, and I do not live in this township, but I am, I own property here. And I have two things to address quickly. One is a letter to the commissioners regarding ADU and R1 zoning. I don't know who I could give this to, but I would like.
Thank you.
More of a letter of encouragement than anything else. The second one, I believe I'm in the wrong place for the second discussion. You guys can help me. Last week I was talking with somebody in the front about some fencing for some things I want to do in my property. And they said that a year ago I had some chickens that I wanted to put on my R1 property. I was told back in October that was permitted. I was told that I was not permitted. I don't think the commissioners need to hear this long story. Who can I talk to to help me through this process? I own 8.16 acres.
It would be zoning, zoning.
Would I just address this to you here or offline?
No, probably better if you do it offline.
I think so too.
You can just call the township main number and ask to be transferred to zone, or there's a, you just follow the prompts and that'll put you in the right.
Into the zoning.
Zoning office.
It's prompt number one.
Prompt number one, zoning office. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Please.
Darryl Parks, 150 Ruby Lane. I just wanted to readdress something Mr. Guatieri said last week. He said that I had been, was shooting and I was doing it vindictively and I don't know, the day he was talking about, it wasn't me shooting. The time I shot was when my son was here on the 28th, which I'm allowed to do regardless, but. And then they called the police on us on that day, but. And then the other issue is. I came here and told the board what the report I got from the dog warden, which the board advised me to call, the dog warden. And she told me there were 11 adult dogs registered to that property. And then he keeps calling me a liar, which I really don't appreciate in a public forum, but I'm just the messenger. And they had another litter of nine puppies in January. And this litter of puppies, which they're not advertising the way they were before, they're not given the how many puppies in a litter. And I don't know if that's to get, so they don't have to get a kennel license or what. But he has already stated that there's been at least 27 dogs going through there. But I really do not appreciate being called a liar when I'm just reporting what I was told. And I just went. And I am not vindictive because it's really bad for my karma. And this has just been a crazy thing. Now they just got found guilty in district court two times. Each one. And then we had another magistrate hearing today with three incidences of dogs getting out and one of them dumping on my property. And they were guilty on all of those. And now I have another one coming up from the dogs getting out on the 25th of August. So I don't know when that's going to be. This is like, going to be like the sixth time I've had to go before the magistrate. And never in the 38 years have I ever had to go to magistrate with anybody on our road. So I just wanted to say that and calling me a liar and saying I'm vindictive and I would, that was, I wasn't even shooting. I'm not the only one that shoots to begin with. So he didn't see me shooting because I wasn't. So I just wanted to let the board know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rootwell Theory, Pocono Township, 154 Ruby Lane. So we had a couple of days worth of hearings and we pled guilty for the sake of peace. Not, yes, our dogs did get loose on a few occasions. We had, as I had stated in previous meetings, we had our backyard fence fortified in the fall. Of 2024, it was many months before anyone got loose again. Now, our one-year-old girl, she's very adventurous. And she's very smart and she was able to dig under. So we did another fortification of the backyard fence. In addition, we built a six-foot privacy fence along the front of our deck and the side of our deck. Not because we thought the dogs were escaping from there, but for the sake of peace. And I understand that there was some fear that the dogs were jumping over the deck. There's a 20-foot drop and our dogs have never jumped over that deck. With regards to the shooting that Ms. Parks just referred to, it's a little disconcerting. When someone during a mediation with Chief Wagner and Lindsay and Ms. Parks. That on the topic of my dogs, she just somehow out of the blue stated that she's a great shot and she denies saying it. But Chief Wagner and Lindsay were in, in. Our presence and they can attest to the fact that you did say it. Also, Ms. Karen. She had remarked to my partner. That to go back to his country where he belongs. You said it when we moved.
This isn't a discussion. Finish your statement.
And.
Please, please be quiet.
His mother is Cuban, but he was born in Lackawanna, New York. These two neighbors have. Been so nasty. We contributed for repairs to the gravel road. Ms. Karen's husband Guy stated that he thanked me that I was the only neighbor to thank him. And we contributed $300 towards it when they told me $200 was the average contribution.
Your time is up, sir.
So we try to be good neighbors.
Karen Deliden, I'm a Pocono Township resident. Okay, to rebut his stuff, I've never seen his partner until court at the courthouse on Thursday. So he's lying about that. I guess I'll be in my slander suit against him now. It's ridiculous. And the fence didn't help on the front porch because they got out since they did the fence. And that was the last one that she had. Plus the noise is just as bad, if not worse. Because it bounces off because the dogs are out front when they're supposed to be in the back of the house. So I don't know what he's talking about. He gave us $300. Wow. In a year and a half, we asked last fall and it would have been cheaper. And my son and my husband used our equipment and our time to do it for free. So yeah, and we've lived there long and we've always have to take care of the road and nobody pays anything but the material. And that was once. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have a public comment? Anybody else dialled in by phone, Jared? Thank you. We don't have any presentations tonight, no hearings. A resolution. There's a resolution on here, but before I make a motion, is there really a need for us to spend taxpayer dollars?
We're not spending taxpayer dollars. The money's been spent on the website already. We voted for that. This would just be posted to it like everything else. There's no extra money involved and Jared will, I guess, confirm that or not confirm it, whichever.
After the latest revision, the website can handle just about two years worth of meetings, give or take. How long the meetings go. The meetings are recorded each day, but this will not, after the second revision, it will not incur any additional expenses.
Does anybody want to make a motion for this?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the audio and video recording and retention policy for public meetings.
For a second?
I'll second for discussion.
We'll get, you'll get your opportunity, sir. Just let us finish, okay? Please. I just go back. So two years worth of meeting. What I don't, I don't get, anybody that wants to come to our meeting, it's open to the public. No one's ever refused. There's minutes that are published. We still have to do minutes. That was one of my questions. So we're not saving any time and laying down with our staff by doing this. I don't get it. So after two years, what do we do? Do we eliminate them? Is there, is there a time that they must be kept on a video? Jared?
No, there's, there's no state requirements. State requirements are just for minutes. We have our audio files that aligns with the Pennsylvania State Record, Records Retention Act. And what would be able to be saved on our UNS again, depending on our current space and how long these meetings go between. Board of Commissioners, planning commission and civil service. We would be able to hold on to the video recordings, give or take four years.
Hey, could somebody sit at home and download these to their computer or whatever and watch these meetings?
Off of the website, yes. Anything past the two-year mark or whenever we hit our bandwidth limit without purchasing additional bandwidth, they would be able to submit a write-to-know for it, yes.
So they have to go to our website and then download it off our website to see the, the recording.
YouTube is. Remain on the township channel for two years. So that was my point. We could go either way. So before we hit a bandwidth, and we can always purchase more bandwidth from our current internet provider. Spend after two years, why are we going to spend taxpayer dollars to store these? Exactly. What do you mean why?
We're not spending.
We, we. After, we have enough space for two years, not seven. So in order to get to seven, we're going to need to spend taxpayer dollars to store these things. On the website, yes, but our current UNS, our network integration cloud, I guess you could call it, will hold, give or take just about four years. Okay, so whenever, whenever we run out of bandwidth and we'd have to spend taxpayer dollars, that's where I say they stop and they, the oldest delete so the newest can go on. And that's how the ordinance is written.
Yeah.
That's how this current resolution is written. That's, after we revised it, we took the additional need for expense out where we wouldn't have to keep adding to either the website or the class. It's years work. Yeah.
Who's going to sit there at home and watch an hour and a half, or some of our meetings go to 11 o'clock at night? They're going to sit there and, sit there on the computer and watch 11 hours?
Rich, for eight years, we never destroyed an audio. Okay, in 1617, we had a policy destroy them. After the minutes were approved, then a new board came on and for eight years until today. We've never, or whenever they were destroyed a month ago, okay, we never had a problem with it. They were sitting on our stuff. It wasn't a problem. Now all of a sudden, for some reason, we've deleted them all without coming to the board. And I just said, I, I want to know when something gets deleted, this policy, all right, or that I got a couple of years and then it will be deleted. Okay? We needed something in writing because we were just doing our own thing. Okay? We weren't following the rules. These are rules to be followed. If you want to change them up, that's fine.
I thought the rules were once the minutes were published and they were approved, the recordings would be eliminated.
And we haven't done that for eight years. So what takes precedent? An eight-year-old rule or what we've been practicing for eight years?
I'm not a lawyer, so I can answer that.
But we have.
As long as we're not spending.
I think that's the, I agree.
As long as we're not spending additional money to keep it past two years or four years, whatever that, whatever that series is, then.
Yeah, I think that's good. Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments before I open up the public? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to say something regarding this matter before we vote on it?
Dawn Isle versus Scott Run. I agree that you should have the videos because there has been times that I've been to these meetings. And I have come back here because what I have said was not put in your minutes. And when we were battling the cell tower, we had attorneys involved. I have come in to your office and actually got recordings. And I do think that the videos people will watch. I watch them. I watch the county commissioners. When I can't go to a county commission meeting, I will sit in. One of them people that'll watch that hour and a half meeting. So I just feel with the videos, it's also protecting. Everybody on what they actually said without having to get recordings. And when you do get the recordings, you have to wait for them. I'd rather see a video than sit, you know how boring your recordings are just to sit there to listen? I'd rather see some, some faces.
But for how long?
I, I agree. I, I agree that they should only be limited to the two years or even in real estate, we're only limited to how long we have to keep our documents. They shouldn't be dragged out. I'm just saying that I, I agree with it because there has been a lot of times where I've gone to Chrissie Anne and said, that's not what I said. And if I'm in a lawsuit with somebody with my attorney or something, I want what I said to be right, not be wrong. And that would protect you guys. As well as me calling you out, saying that's not what I said. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I agree with Dawn. I think that it's a good idea. I think it shows good faith between the board, between the commissioners and the public. And it gives us something we can go back to. If you don't feel like going on Zoom, some people have a hard time with that. I think keeping it, you know, the two years or whatever is fine, but I really think it's a service that I think shows good faith. Between the township and the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I actually have a question before we, sorry, before we receive. Is there anything in here regarding Jared, if there's a technological issue? So how, how we're no longer, our Zoom meeting is a courtesy, you know what I'm saying? It's not required in order for us to be compliant with sunshine law, how we throw those meetings out because we didn't have Zoom up and running. Is there a provision in this that?
That's not, this is.
I would.
What I'm, what I'm seeing though is by passing this ordinance, we're saying we're going to post our videos. Well, if we don't have a video because we had a technological issue. Where's the provision in here that says for that circumstance?
I will defer to Mr. DeVito on this one.
Yeah, no, this is retention policy, assuming that everything is up and running correctly. If the commissioners advertise that a meeting, a public meeting is being held and that you are able to participate remotely. And the remote fails, then we find ourselves in the situation where you're in. In April, where Zoom failed. And so the policy decision that the board needs to make is, or do you allow remote participation? I think the consensus of the board was yes, we'll allow it. The risk you run is if Zoom goes down, now that meeting can be challenged and you, you shouldn't conduct business beyond Zoom going down. Does that make sense?
It does.
This is, but this has to do with retention. This doesn't have to do with whether or not we're offering Zoom as an option.
But I'm not saying it's about Zoom. My, my question is, so, okay, so section three says posting of videos. Following approval of the minutes for a meeting, staff shall post the video or a link to the hosted video on a township YouTube channel and cross-length the agenda and approve minutes. What if we don't have the video? What if there was a problem? That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. So is there any?
So, so we, we, we conduct the meeting, Zoom works fine during the meeting. However, when it comes time to upload or post it, Zoom disappears or something like that. I assume that's the question?
No, no, just in general, like our.
But you can't do.
Because didn't we make our, didn't we?
Yeah.
Because of the issue that we had with the Zoom and the phones, two meetings in a row, and we had to throw two meetings out.
Correct.
Didn't we change to say that it's not contingent upon the Zoom for us to conduct our meetings? Isn't?
I don't believe.
We'd vote on that. Okay.
Yeah, the, the rest of the meetings that were held at the old building, the Zoom option was no longer available because of the technical issues. But I believe once we relocated to this building, that the Zoom option for participation was put back into place.
Okay, so if we have an issue with the Zoom, does that affect this policy at all?
Not the retention policy. It affects the validity of the meet for the commissioner. There's a difference. Am I missing something?
Zoom isn't required.
That is correct. That's a board decision to allow remote participation.
By any law.
Pre-Zoom, pre-COVID, if you wanted to say something in a meeting, you sat out where.
Well, that's, that's my, that's what I, that's what I've been saying for us ever.
There was no Zoom, quote unquote, Zoom option.
Like Zoom, I don't see how we even had to redo those meetings because Zoom went down, but that's water under the bridge. I don't see why we have to Zoom the meetings if we're going to post the meetings online. So that's just, that's just my opinion.
The, the, you raised, Mike raised a good point, but the dividing line is participation. I can watch a city of Bethlehem zoning hearing, live stream on YouTube or look it up a week from now on YouTube, but it doesn't allow me to participate.
Right. Well, if you want to participate in the meeting, you come to the building.
Come to the building. The way it's set up.
Just my opinion.
But the way it's set up now is you provide the Zoom or remote option.
Right.
And if you do that and it fails, then you haven't given access to the public as you've advertised.
We're required to give.
No.
Okay. So for whatever reason, the video doesn't exist. Let's not talk about Zoom or any, for whatever reason, does the meeting not count?
No, the meeting counts so long as, I mean. So long as there's at least an audio recording that allows you to look at the minutes.
Anything else?
Charles Kepler, resident. Obviously, I'm very much in favor of the posting the videos. I don't, I don't really understand the concern with the, the storage limit. You can upload as much as you want onto YouTube if that's where the videos are going to be posted. I suppose some, they're also going to be on the website. But as long as they're posted to YouTube, there's no upload limit to YouTube. I know I've been uploading all the meeting recordings to YouTube. I know lots of YouTubers who upload. Thousands of hours of video and, you know, they don't hit a limit. So you can post them there all day long at no cost to the taxpayer. The meeting minutes here are extraordinarily vague. I think having that video available and easily accessible is great. And it's also, it, it takes a long time to get your write-to-knows processed. I know. My wife and I have been putting in a lot to write to knows and a lot of write to knows and it can take up to a month to get it back, even just for a meeting audio recording. So having it easily accessible right there on the website would be a huge benefit to the residents of Pocono Township, in my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody that dialed in by phone? Okay, we have, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion from the commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Nay. I guess motion carry. Under consent agenda, I believe Ellen has some.
Yeah, I had some changes to the minutes. And some of them are questions. Under, one of them is under presentations. Generally, when we have a presentation, we get a little blurb of what it was about, but the Cranberry Creek is here and there's no subject matter. And I don't know why. Shouldn't there be something there?
Were they, were they not here? They were here. They were here. Okay. They were here about parking. Oh, yeah, 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 the, the parking space. Right.
I mean, they, they got on the agenda to do a presentation and I know like when anybody else comes, we, we explain what they presented. So I would, I think something should go there. It doesn't have to be long, but something. Up to the board and. On the first motion on Rich's section. I believe Brian stated his reason that should be in the minutes. Charles asked what it was for. Brian answered. I, I think that should be in there. It's just applying to his. I mean, it's no different than the paperwork he handed in. But according to the sunshine law, it needs to be in the minutes and on that paper. Leo, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, it doesn't hurt, but does it, is it required?
Yeah.
It's, it should be for.
It should be for the minute church. All right.
Just marked it up. Then under Brian's section. The part that says Ellen and Natasha rebutted comments, we didn't rebut. That's just so negative. I just tried to clarify what I perceived was a misunderstanding. And I talked to Natasha and I think she agreed it wasn't really a rebuttal. So I would like that word taken out. And, and either just say that we tried to clarify a perceived misunderstanding. And and either just say that we tried to clarify a perceived misunderstanding. It was a neutral, wasn't a negative comment. Then down on Public Works under Pat, second bullet, I think you meant, this is a typo, you meant swells instead of sails. And then, um, again, under the engineer report, Brian did state. Why you abstained, and I just think that should be in there. That that's my corrections.
Jared, can we include those corrections in the minutes, or should we not approve these minutes?
I would say moving forward, if the board has any comments like that, send them to me ahead of time so that we can get it updated.
But yes, I agree.
Makes it easier. But yes, we can make those amendments.
So under consent agenda, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, the following items. Old Business, consisting of the minutes of the August eighteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners with amendments. Financial transaction through September second, twenty twenty five is presented, including ratification of expenditures in the amount of two hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and forty-two cents. For the following accounts, General Fund, Sewer Operations, Gross Payroll, Capital Reserve, Construction Fund, Transfers. Just, is there, is there a second? Discussion? Before we vote, any questions from the audience on this motion? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, Personnel, I'll make a mi- motion to hire a blank for the vacant part-time DPW position. Is there a blank name in there?
There is, it's Michael Stettler, Jr.
I'll make a motion to hire Michael Stettler, Jr. For a vacant part-time DPW position. Is there a second? Second by Natasha. Discussion?
Yes, um, how many people did you interview?
We interviewed two people for two vacant positions. I also had some resumes left over from prior interviews. Uh, this is a part-time position, so a lot of the people that we interviewed were looking for a full-time position. So that's why we selected for this position.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before you vote on that, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to comment? All in favor? Aye, any nays?
Um, just, I'm sorry, but Leo, do we have to say the rate or is this part of the union contract?
Yeah, this is part of the union contract. It's the part-time position that comes without benefits. It's. A maximum of thirty-seven hours a week. Um, and I believe it's eighty percent of the full union rate.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in my report, I'll make a motion to approve a twenty twenty-six MMO non-union pension plan. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Ellen. Discussion? Didn't we vote on the hire? Sorry, all in favor? Any nays? Motion carried. Now I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six MMO for non-union pension plan.
I'll second that.
Second by Ellen again, and is there a discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to make a comment regarding this? All in favor? Aye, any nays? Motion carried. I'll make a motion to approve a twenty twenty-six MMO Police Pension Plan. Is there a second? Second by Mike. Discussion?
I just have a question and we might not have an answer yet. Do you know what the um, state is paying us for our pension? Part of this gets paid by the state for a grant, so I just wonder what we're expecting.
I will get that. I have it in the share drive. I don't have it on this email here, but I'll get it for you.
That's okay.
Anybody else? Anybody in the uh, audience? All in favor? Aye, any nays? Motion carried. I'll make a motion to approve the following PTPD policies. Personal complaints, requests for change of assignment. Lactation breaks, work-related injury and occupational disease reporting. Badge patches and identification, illness and injury prevention, safety belts. Commendations and awards, payroll records, personnel appearance standards, temporary modify, modify duty assignments. Line of duty deaths, body armor, fitness for duty, overtime compensation. Uniforms and civilian attire, performance history, audits, wellness programs, personnel records. Meal, period, and breaks, outside employment and outside overtime, conflicts of interest. Speech expression and social networking. Is there a second? Second by Natasha. Discussion?
Some of these were definitely in the last.
No.
Say that this is the last of them. It doesn't matter, just, it seems like.
They are different each time. They are different each time.
And you're okay with all them, Jim?
Yes, thank you. We've been working with Lexa Paul over the last year to change our policies, update our policies.
And are these available for the commissioners to read, in case we can't sleep at night?
If you're bored, sure, absolutely.
How do, how do we get access to that? Is it on a website or is it? Do we just have them?
They've been, uh, they've been sent to your email. Uh, this, the last two have not been sent because it's larger than our. File allotment, but if you would like, uh, we can definitely get the file. See, I'm gonna have to put it on a jump drive because it's way too big.
Yeah, right, the first one. Red four, five.
Yeah, each revision.
You've sent some of them then? You've sent me already.
Yeah, each revision is. At least a hundred pages.
Yeah, yeah, now that's enough material.
I mean, if you can't sleep, you know, we can always send you somewhere.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience before we vote? All in favor? Any nays? Motion carried. Thank you. Um, Ms. Leap?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Canant?
Um, a few unusual. Um, John, anything new on the solar field?
Uh, nothing really new. I mean, they're making progress. They did finish Basin three oh five. That was the one that they had some problems with. But they've got that completed now. Uh. They're continuing putting up posts and panels in sections or phases C and D and. Whenever they disturb any ground, they're immediately seeding and mulching, so.
And have we checked that, is there seeding growing?
Uh, I did not ask my inspector that specific question, but I believe I would have been told if it was a problem. We're still going up there. Uh, every two weeks, twice every two weeks.
Does he, does he take pictures?
Yes.
Oh, so maybe if he would take pictures, I'd like to see, I'd like to see green.
I will send you pictures.
Have nothing on the kennel. And a few other things that aren't on here, but they're not motion related, but um. On our format of our agenda. We've kind of gotten away from Robert's rules. I think. Somewhere along the line, we got to putting our motions under our names, and I, I don't think. That's necessarily proper. And it just should be old business, new business, and then when our thing comes up, we speak to it. I don't. These aren't personal agendas for us. This is all township business. I just. It's just a comment. I just think we could change that up. My other question for us to think about. And it's probably gonna be talked about later, but sidewalks. I'm not necessarily in favor of sidewalks to nowhere down six eleven. And I would like us all to think about, do we really need them? And if we're gonna do this, shouldn't we have a meeting with all the business owners? To let them know, this is gonna cost people money. This is gonna cost manpower to shovel. Expenses for salt and then insurance, because when somebody slips and falls, it's not us getting sued because we're, we have immunity. The business owner. So this is gonna be costly to our little mom and pops up and down six eleven. To have these sidewalks and they're liable. And Leo, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure. Somebody falls and gets hurt, it's the business owner that's gonna get the, the brunt of it.
The landowner, correct.
So I'm not in favor of them, but if you're gonna do it, I think we should. Not put in any sidewalks until we have this meeting with the business owners and get some feedback. Because we might be losing our businesses and then there'll be no need for sidewalks. They can't afford. I just want us to start thinking about it.
How far away is this project? But Turkey Hill is part of their plans.
But we've obtained uh, all the easements now, uh, except for PNC Bank. And all the engineering is now completed. So we are probably looking, John, correct me if I'm wrong, February, give or take, for bid?
I think, I think that's the latest schedule, yes.
Yeah, we just, we just had our, we just had our meeting last week with the TASSA reps, so. Again, this is being funded under a federal grant, so if we're going to pull back on this. Um, we're probably gonna owe the feds right around two hundred thousand.
Number one, we've talked about this for five or six years. There's been other members of the commissioners on here and they agreed, whether you have or not, Ellen Knight. That's fine.
But I think we should.
But it's a little too late. We've spent so much money on this. It's ready to go. Where's the two hundred thousand dollars gonna come from? Uh, if if we don't continue with the project to pay them, pay them back. And the question, and probably the same thing with the roundabout, because I'm hearing rumors about that circulating around town. That uh, that may not happen or whatever. So all the money that we've paid uh, for easements, legal fees, engineering fees. All that money has to be paid back too, so.
We don't know that for sure. We haven't checked that, right?
No, it's, it's.
Because some grants you don't have to pay back because they, they pay for your consideration of whether or not you want to do it.
That's how the zoning grant is for sure.
Right, so we don't know it for sure.
I'm sorry. It's an unpopular opinion, but I'm not sold on these sidewalks either. Where are we walking to? If we had a, if we had a, a main street feel. It would be a totally different story, but we don't. And how are we gonna get around all the telephone poles? Because I know we did one of these projects in East Stroudberg and it's just. Nobody, well, I mean, I'm sure some people walk on, but then every telephone pole, you go out and around and it just, it looks silly. I I'm just. But if we're gonna do that, then we should also, in the zoning overlay, not make the businesses that come to. Six eleven, put sidewalks in either because they're, they're not gonna leak anywhere. And then if we're gonna do that, we shouldn't be putting them in the middle of the woods. Curbs and sidewalks in a subdivision.
I agree.
But I also don't want to cost the, if it ends up that we have to pay back a two hundred thousand dollar. Expense that we've already spent. I don't, uh, I don't think the tax, that, I don't think it's fair to make the taxpayers pay that.
Well, then we better get out there fundraising because it's not fair to make them pay. To shovel and salt these sidewalks that they never asked for in the first place. Right, and if they move, we're not getting tax dollars.
I mean, I do, I do like your idea of the call to action to the business owners. I mean, they're, they're the ones that are shelling the expenses and the burden of those sidewalks.
Who knows? But, but I'm not gonna park my car at Wais and walk up and down six eleven.
When you can drive to TLC or wherever you're going and.
Right. What are the north and south extents? The north and south extent of these on six eleven?
It would be going from smugglers to the stars.
Both sides.
I just wanted you to think about it.
Yeah, so only because a lot of this task stuff started prior to being sitting here. And I don't think there's been any votes since I've been on. What happens to the businesses that do not have ample parking as it is? So for instance, Best Autos. They literally have parking spaces against the curb and they only are, they're, they're four foot off the line. So like, what happens in situations with? Those businesses, because there's a lot of them.
Steels is a perfect example of that. And their uh, PennDOT allows for jutouts in certain businesses. John, I don't know which, I know there's quite a few jutouts, but I don't remember.
We, we don't have any, that situation has not been raised in this current phase. I do know that farther north, when PennDOT just said that approval, that that pro- project. Uh, they rearranged some parking for those businesses farther north.
Steels, it goes into PennDOT right away.
So they're gonna move.
The Steels. The Steel sidewalk is gonna be constructed in the PennDOT right of way.
And I believe.
And what is?
EG necklace. Sunshine Auto, whatever they call themselves.
Look, it's, this is great for PennDOT too, because PennDOT. PennDOT likes limited access, and this is gonna limit access to one entrance per business, which is actually, that's a great thing for traffic, but. I don't know, it's, this is a huge. What are we doing?
Because I don't, I've never seen the outlay of how it's gonna look when it's done.
There's a plan, there's a plan out in the lobby.
Don't remember.
There's a plan in the lobby, Ellen.
Yeah, we've, it's been on here since I started a year and a half ago. But I, we've never bought it. I've never talked about it. But sure, I mean, that'd be great, bring the businesses in.
We were awarded the grant in twenty twenty-three. It's a federal task grant. We were one of two townships in the entire state who received it.
Which is fantastic.
Yeah, doesn't mean we have to use it.
However. If the businesses don't want it.
Well, just remember the next time you see a, a mother pushing a stroller down six eleven between the white line. And the curbs that are there, just keep that in mind. And also, think about the young lady that was uh, run over over in East Stroudsburg as a student. Because there was no sidewalks. Uh, and I'm just saying, if you look further down six eleven, where St. Paul's used to have their church. There were sidewalks in town. Has the town changed? Yeah, it has, but it hasn't changed drastically. And uh, people that I talk to are looking forward to that, so maybe they can walk to. Matter of fact, I walk my dog down to TLC Park. I also walk my dog down to Learn Road Park. You know where I walk? I walk between the white line and the grass. And I walk on the side that I see something coming, so if I have to get out of the way, I can hopefully get out of the way. Learn Road, I'm walking in the street because there are no sidewalks. Although, but there are. Even there's old sidewalks from uh, the Wawa uh, going north for about two or three properties. Might be more than, might be, you know, covered over with grass and people mow now. But there were sidewalks in Tannersville one time. I think there's pictures here uh, to show that, so. Again, people say, I've never seen anybody pushing a stroller. Well, I have.
I definitely have. I mean, my, my employees walk from our business over to ESSA, like I definitely understand that, but. When the liability falls on the business owners, the business owners.
As long as they take care of.
It doesn't matter if they care or not, everybody sues everybody now. You can, you can literally, you can pour a whole bag of salt and someone can fall and they'll still sue you.
They'll sue you for falling, slipping on the salt.
Hundred percent.
Our guys walked to Wawa.
Leo can speak for this, but somebody slipped under seven fifteen within Pocono Township and Pocono Township's getting sued for it. On a PennDOT road.
Yeah, but we have immunity, so where are they getting? Right, the business owner does not have immunity. Absolutely. That's my concern.
And the disruption to six eleven is gonna be incredible, that disruption. That'll be an enclosure every day for a long, long time.
So I, I don't know when Turkey Hill was supposed to put theirs in, but I think we should. Put it on hold until we have our business meeting. Because they, they put it in, then that's, and it doesn't move forward, then that's even worse, right?
I mean, can we, so can we advertise for a work? I mean, can we so can we advertise for a workshop? Or especially whatever it is, like, I don't know the terms for it, but to ask the business owners if they wanna come in. Yeah, I mean, here's the thing, the the majority could be in favor of it, and then we have our answer.
And then what are you gonna do with the money that we have? Who's gonna pay that back?
We have to find out. We have to pay it back. We'll have to pay it back.
It's another drop in the bucket. And then it makes the township look foolish too on top of it. But anyway.
I'm in agreement with Brian though. We have to pay money back and we can keep moving forward. You know what I'm saying? There's no, there's no sense wasting money.
And we spent two hundred now. And we're doing. It's gotta be. It's gotta be two and a half miles, three miles a cycle. How far is it, John?
Well, it's no, it's nowhere near that, Brian.
A mile to seven fifteen.
Yeah, the overall plan is, but this is this section is about. Six blocks.
So then when's the rest gonna connect?
As you get more money.
So if we're not even gonna do the whole thing, it's gonna be piecemeal. It's not good.
That's six blocks.
I thought it was from Smugglers to um TLC Park. Are we not doing that? And I I need to look at that plan. So shame on me.
It's going from. Turkey Hill, the south side. And it's. It's realigning that whole intersection. Of Learn Road coming down where it was pigeonway to make it a better intersection with Old Mill. That's that's probably a lot of the. Expense. And then it goes south. I'm trying to think, we come down past the firehouse just down to the old municipal building. It comes down to that far.
That's it? For eight hundred thousand dollars?
No, that's with with what goes into this? I said it, we're doing three miles both sides of the road. There's no way eight hundred thousand is even coming close. That sounds better.
Yeah, but why are we even doing that if you can't walk down?
I disagree with you. I'm just saying that.
I would rather stop spending the grant. I think we need to find out. Can we find out who would that be you or Leo? How we what that grant?
Well, she's been on the easement, et cetera. Do we have a copy of the grant? I I don't know. Yeah, give me a copy of that grant, Jared.
And then my other thing is, just because we don't do sidewalks, the realignment. Is still that could happen without sidewalks, right? You could still realign that workshop thing.
From an engineering standpoint, you certainly could. I don't know what the grant says.
Yeah, the grants. Specifically has sidewalks in it because it's.
So I can walk from Wendy's to the township building and that's it. I mean, that's not. What benefit is that? I thought it was going all the way down to Smugglers. I thought it was starting. What what are you doing at Rimrock?
That's a turning wing project that's funded by Multimodal and ALSA grant two different projects.
We we did a concept plan which runs from Smugglers all the way up to Wendy's. But this was the first phase that we got funding for the actual construction.
Well, can we revisit it? Because it's been so many years. Can we? Leo, can you look into the grant, what it can and cannot do and?
Yeah, I mean, I I would look at the grant to see whether or not the project requires reimbursement. If funds are uh. Paid and the project is not completed. I think that's the primary issue.
And then maybe set up a meeting with the businesses to get their. If they want it. But it's not, that's not a lot of businesses.
We spent two hundred thousand in that short section.
Well, between all the engineering. The lawyers and. All the uh. Oh, it's not just John. I mean, you know, PennDOT reps, attorneys. Engineers, uh the TASSA reps are on every single call, every single month. So it it's a federal grant, so I can guarantee you they're not gonna forgive a single thing. And good luck with us getting another federal grant. If we return this.
I I don't think that should be a factor. I mean. Yeah, the people want it, then they can have it. But if they don't want it, I don't see the benefit. Spend another six hundred thousand.
Mr. Wyatt.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bellardi.
Yeah, the uh the Golden Slipper Road update. They lied. They said it would be open September first. It was open August twenty ninth. So how can we complain about that? Um, do the zoning people have any new information on the Barton Glen? Dump? We won't call it a tent city anymore because it's there no tents. It's a dump.
Yes, but we did send a property maintenance notice for accumulating bulk items, municipal waste, things like that. But we have yet to receive a response.
The tractor is still.
That was also included.
That was still straddling the uh the pile of dirt leaking oil all over the place. And um, oh, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Uh reports zoning?
Yes, um so this month we had a total of sixty permits that were issued. From an enforcement standpoint, it was relatively busy for the most part, but I'll just highlight a couple of the bigger ones. So Schleers, one thirty five Warner Road, we had resent a new enforcement notice to follow up on the one sent back in twenty nineteen. Just because there was a change of ownership back then and we wanted to just make sure. Our I's were dotted and T's crossed. So that went out earlier this month. We did receive a response from their engineering team as well as legal. And they are in the process of getting their land development finalized for that project. And let's see. Yep, Tempsity, we already discussed that. We had a total of eight violations closed this. This period, six are included on here, but two additional have been included since then. And from a hearing standpoint, twenty three fifty one Route seven fifteen, that was big time basketball camp. That has since been continued to October fourteenth at twelve, just while we're trying to figure out some things with Jackson Township. And upcoming public hearings, we have three eighty three Babbling Brook Road as well as thirteen oh five Suri Sway. Coming up in October.
Does anybody have anything for Lindsay?
I do. Um and actually, it's it's for the board, again, for your consideration. Um. Not that we can take action on it tonight, but I I did stop in and I talked to Jared and Sean and Lindsay was there too. If you read this report. Nobody gets permit, right? Didn't have a permit, didn't have a permit, did built an entire house without a single permit. So Sean, I'm like, how do you stop that? And um Sean had suggested there is like a penalty. Fee or something that you would pay if you don't get a permit first. Because now it's so like, well, get the permit and you're good. So what, you know? And everybody does it. Everybody just does what they want and it's a permit later. It's a problem.
Leo, the MPC outlines what we can and can't do with that, right? And sets the fee.
Uh just to clarify, this wouldn't be under a a zoning clause. It would be under the PA UCC. That would allow us to anytime someone does building without a permit under uh the building code, we would be able to do a UCC like stop work order fee. Kind of, we discussed it, some other townships that uh utilize this would be uh Jackson Township. Uh Mount Pokonno Borough, Middle Smithfield Township. They have similar kind of fees associated with stop work orders.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be the even the Spouty's Planning Code because it's not zoning, it's code. Uniform construction code.
That's it. There you go.
And uh. In the uh in New Jersey, where I'm a construction official, which is basically what these folks will do. Um, we use the uh penalty phase as a hammer to get compliance. Uh sometimes the penalty is accrued by the day. Sometimes it's accrued by the week. Um it's up to the construction official. I don't know what the UCC says here in Pennsylvania, but I gotta figure it's it's comparative.
Uh, yep, so there's kind of two aspects. There's the the notice of violation. Uh so if someone does do construction and doesn't come in to get a permit, there are fees associated with that uh up to a thousand dollars per day under the UCC. This would be for anyone who uh performs construction, then retroactively gets a permit. Uh kind of is a a penalty fee for doing things without permits or coming to the township first.
So does it go back then to when it started? You're saying retro? If they come in when they're done and try to get one retroactively.
Yeah, for example, let's say someone did a an addition on the side of the house. Uh we noticed when they're starting doing framing, we go out post a stop work order. As soon as we post that stop work order, uh the fees are generally a percentage of the total permit fee. So let's say their total permit fee comes to a thousand dollars for the addition. There would be uh either uh fifty percent, uh whatever kind of the board decides on that uh cure. And then that would kind of. That way, there is a fee associated with starting work and getting a permit retroactively versus uh if we just do a notice of violation. Uh sometimes if they don't go to court, we don't get any of those fees and it's just a permit fee. So. There is administrative costs that that kind of covers stop work orders, notice violations, things like that.
I'm not looking to hurt the people, but there's so much that, I mean, every other thing here is you didn't have a permit to do it. Maybe we need also, in addition to a penalty, maybe an education, I don't know, pamphlet that we can send out? I don't know how you get the word out that you need a permit for something. Some people honestly don't know they need one, but to build a whole house, the builders certainly knew. They needed a permit.
So we do on the the township website, we have a like a what permits do I need section? And I know for a while, uh the township had been posting during the summer. I think it was every Friday, they would post a typical project. What permits would be required and what documents would be required with those as well? I know there was a lot of backlash with certain projects, but if we wanna start implementing that again, that's something we could do. And I know I've been in discussion with Jared as well about the the township up, the website updates to include. Typical projects in a dropdown that provides the applications and details on what would be required for it. So I think the the resources are available. It's just voluntary compliance is is difficult sometimes.
And so that fine, is that um discretionary? Or is that an absolute?
Uh so the way we do it in other townships, as soon as if we have to post a stock or order for any reason, uh we would post that. And then if they have a complaint, uh it would be kind of up to the board's discretion to either waive it or uh ignore the fee essentially.
What board? The UCB or?
Your, the Board of Commissioners, because it'd be a uh, it's more of a fee than a actual policy. So it'd be like any amendment to a township fee schedule.
Is is anybody interested in pursuing that or 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 no?
Well, it it it's all about compliance. Um I I had no idea that it had to go before the Board of Commissioners. I write ten thousand dollar penalties a couple of times a week. Just because that's my job. And uh and then, of course, they haggle it down, but um. I I was, I I'm really surprised that you have to come to us to to do your job. I mean, you should be able to do your job.
It's. Uh we have to come to you. It's if there is a major complaint, if the. Essentially, we tell them it's a hard line and we don't have any discretion on fees.
How does the UCC look at it here in Pennsylvania?
So the township has the ability to amend their township fee schedule for the building permit. And it would be a stop work order fee under the kind of uh the current township fee schedule.
Oh, I I gotta give you my fee schedule. Make your hair curl.
Large scale, like building a house, but I mean. I honestly think a majority of the people that we've seen on these lists don't really know. They're they're clearing out a little section of their yard to put a to put a shed in the privacy fence. Most people look at it as I'm a taxpayer, this is my house. I'm gonna put a shed up, not knowing that we're nickel and diming them on permit fees already for the shed. That is then Monter County is gonna come out and then tax them on the shed too, on top of everything else. So we're kind of, how how far down the rabbit hole of nickel and diming these people do we wanna do? Now, building a house, huge violations, I'm all for, but. The majority of the stop work orders are very small. And I honestly think people just don't know. Limited grading on their property. So we're gonna, we're gonna post them with a violation of a stop work order, stop taking your grass out. And stop grading the property, two hundred dollars for that, five hundred dollars for the permits, and then you can take your.
That's why I asked if it was discretionary, because you wouldn't necessarily have to.
But how how do you then, how do you, how do you then decide who you're gonna find and who you're not gonna find?
Well, it's a matter of, it's a matter of who's who's gonna comply. Like I said, I I I use it. Uh for subcodes is twenty five hundred dollars a subcode. It's ten thousand dollars for putting an addition on your house. Um that's the penalty. But if you come down to Town Hall and take out the permits, that goes down to five hundred.
Well, the majority of these people do. Right by it, and if they don't make right by it, then we sue them and. Usually get a twelve thousand dollar.
It's just a hammer to gain compliance.
So you know what I'm saying? Like, there's their, there's their penalty is if you don't comply. We're gonna take you to court and we're gonna stick you with twelve thousand dollars in fines.
Yeah, I think the distinction too is the difference between the zoning permits and the building permits. The penalty fine, that wouldn't. Go onto any zoning permits with or the typical sheds and fences. It would go on the building permits if. People renovate the interior of their house or put in a new electrical service, things like that. It wouldn't be the the smaller projects that we we typically find.
So the shed and this this one shed in privacy, that's zoning.
Just zoning.
Fifty dollars a day is the maximum fine under the MPC.
Five hundred.
Five hundred dollars a day.
For a shed and a fence, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, if we if we take them to court.
How much is the permit for a shed?
It's fifteen cents a square foot plus fifty dollars. So anything under one eighty is that seventy. Seventy.
And by the way, when you fill out your permit for your fence and submit it to the township. It then goes to Monter County Courthouse and the tax assessor show affects your office and see what kind of fence you installed to raise your taxes because they did that for me.
So if you're saying these little.
You're a chain link, don't do privacy.
You're saying these little things are too little, why do we even require permit?
Well, so I if I can see it from that standpoint, because there's setbacks and stuff for a shed and for a fence that you don't wanna be encroaching on your neighbor's chain. So I can, and I can see a a fee for. Acquiring the permit, whether it's fifty dollars or not. I don't know, but at least then you know the rules. It's gotta be this far. And you gotta draw a little plan up showing you that that far. So I agree with that. So you're not, you're not. Uh putting it.
You're gonna let them do that without a permit and then and then they come in and just pay for a permit as a as though they had it in the beginning.
But they still have to comply. So even even if they come in and Lindsay correct me if I'm wrong, but even if they come in. After they're caught or didn't know that they were doing without a permit, they come in for their permit, they still have to comply. With all the regulations in order to get the permit, and if they're not compliant, they have to move it or do a variance or whatever the next next steps are, right? So don't just arbitrarily get a permit. They still have to comply.
But they get a fine.
They can get a fine and they pay the permit fees.
Another kind of aspect that uh Jackson Township was throwing around would be uh multiple offenders. So people who own multiple SDRs or do multiple flipping throughout the township. Uh if it does happen more than once, you get like one warning. Or if you do an addition on a house and then again you do another uh project that would escalate to a permit like that, then that's when those fines get occurred.
Yeah, if you know better, you should get hammered or a second time or a third time or the fourth time, absolutely.
Uh we find a lot of times it's it is that kind of, oh, I didn't know, or oh, my neighbor told me I didn't need a permit if I had existing deck here, things like that. So. Typically, when we do go out, when we post stop workers of that nature, we'll tell them and by the end of the day, most times. People will come in for the applications and we work with them, so.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm wondering, I'm wondering. I got a stop work order because we're replacing three deck boards. And I'm commercial, so I'm not only zoning, I'm building boats too.
Yeah, we could have little private meetings.
Oh, sorry.
Anything else for Lindsay before we move on? Lindsay, thank you very much. Chief Wagner.
I have nothing to say.
Thank you. Township manager, Mr. Belvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, following up on the issue with the basketball court at uh Mountain View Park, um, despite us locking the gate at night now, um, after our trespassers are starting to pry up the bottom of the fence and crawl in and they're at their own uh games, so. Uh, we have scheduled defense contract to come out and reinforce lower rail, and we are waiting on Rodney to install the new cameras. So just keeping you updated on that.
We know where these kids are from? No idea.
No.
Take down the basketball rooms, that's it, take down the, that's the next thing that happened, pure to take them down. It doesn't happen this year, it'll probably happen next year. Before some of them, well, that's okay. Eliminated a problem, didn't it? Big time.
Yeah, because the next thing you know, it's gonna be like we had at T L C Park.
Yeah.
You're gonna have gang.
Yeah.
And uh, somebody's gonna get hooked.
Yeah, which we don't need.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, next, uh, we had our annual policy review for our workers' comp insurance. Uh, we completed our annual safety meeting with the workers' comp provider. Uh, year to date, we have uh three viewers uh submitted claims and a fifty seven percent reduction in medical treatment expenditures, um, and they do have some documents with some upcoming policy that they'd like to see. Uh, so over the next few months, uh, once Chris and Leo and I uh hammer it out, you'll see that uh presented as some new policies. Zoning, Lindsay kind of touched on with the website, uh, we're working with our media partner to add a bunch of stuff uh after some of the uh website sample came out. And Lindsay and Paul did a good job of getting some more things, like you said, Alan, um, do I need this for this and some dropdowns. Uh, they're also working with some uh custom A P I so that we can time municipal pay right into the website, so people would be able to pay that uh through the website as well uh versus having to come in. Sewer extensions, uh, Pat and I met with uh D E P in Penn Vest last week uh regarding some of our long-term projects. Um, that being the extension on Sullivan Trail, the M C T I uh exa- expansion, the Staten Road expansion, uh, the uh updated sonar on our skater system and the uh sewer building. Uh, meeting actually went very well. Um, the financing for years one through five would be one percent A P R and year six through twenty would be one point six seven. Uh, D E P actually was able to help uh Mike, Pat and I out with some of our uh gravity fed approaches, uh, so all of those extension would be under two hundred and fifty E D Us, uh, reducing the water quality modules uh that would have to be done, so this will help us uh get to the finish line a little more faster. Um, so we pulled uh Jens and Zach uh from P F M, they were part of our original Penn Vest loan. Uh, and they will, as we get closer and get some more engineering done for Mike Gable, uh, they'll present in front of the board as we get closer.
So how much are we talking about right now without really knowing?
Eight million.
Eight million, and this might be a John or a Leo question, or maybe you know Jared, um, because this is a new area, do we have to redo the rate? Do these people get a different rate? Are they like it's a different section?
No. Because there was. All the rates, all the rates would remain the same, they have to.
Because this was not part of the original, the original people didn't sign on for this.
Understood, but it would still be the same rate.
I thought I read in there that if you add on, it gets a separate calculation.
We're we're not re, we're not changing anything on our five thirty seven, this is within our current five thirty seven.
So it's within the current sewer district, so it would have to be same rate.
Okay, I thought this, I thought we amended our five thirty seven to include this. I thought it was new, different from what we originally had.
Just for clarity, I think we should specify too, there's two rates, right? There's the tapping fee rate, which is the initial connection, which is driven by the capital cost, and then there's a user fee. User fee is definitely the same, it has to be paid the same.
Correct.
Um, and I'm not certain on the tapping fee. Uh, if if the study says that it's the same, it's the same. I I can't answer that, but the user fee would be the same regardless. And and this is within the existing Act five thirty seven plan? Yes.
Read that again. I'll read it again.
So about water, are we gonna, are we gonna install their lines for them under this and then look for reimbursement, because they're never gonna do it?
Haven't gotten that far yet, I have kept um B C R A in the loop of the areas that we're looking to uh sewer, and we'll continue to have conversations with them, it's a funny issue for them as well.
I I'm trying, they were promised twenty one million dollars from the Army Corps of Engineers under the previous administration. As soon as, and this happened at the airport too, as soon as Courtwright was out of office, they got a million of it. Twenty million, that's never was appropriated for it. And same as the airport, they had a three million dollar grant that nobody can find.
So with these projects, um, keep in mind that the M C T I extension um is already served by water, M C T I is served by B C R A water under a separate project where we didn't provide sewer, so that is already water. Some of the other projects that Jared uh referenced may or may not require public water, that's still being discussed.
I I thought it was a mandatory hookup to water if we ran sewer by you.
But for new construction.
It specifically says new construction.
Yeah, if it's new construction, it's right.
But so, this is new construction, right? It's not right up there yet.
No, it's not new construction, Camelback's there.
Oh, you mean, oh, I meant the sewer was new construction.
The docket specifically says new construction, nobody's challenged it yet.
Right, oh, so if I put up a new hotel.
Yeah. Has to be, if it's gonna be public sewer, it's gotta be public water and it's gotta come from Stroud.
So it it does not go up to Camelback, it will go to Skeesaw Village right, you know, right before the Snow Tubing Hill. Um, there is a caveat where D E P will allow it to go up there without water if there's a failing sewer plant. And there's current violations, just like the uh Barshin Court, uh, that is the trailer park that's off of Barshin Court right behind M C T I.
I thought if the sewer went by, you had to get water.
Of new.
To houses.
New, well, the houses.
Yeah. The houses, so when the sewer goes up Sullivan Trail and it passes a house, that house is gonna have to get water, but the Camelback's not?
There is new construction, there is a caveat.
Yeah, Camelback is not listed on our five thirty seven.
Or whoever it's going to.
Yeah.
Say Alaska Peaks or whatever, right?
These new construction.
Right, but the houses you pass along the way have to hook up because Alaska Peaks needs water. If there's a house.
If B C R A runs line, they're gonna make a mandate. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I'm against, I don't like mandated for any water.
I think, so, again, these are separate, they're separate areas and they have separate um constraints, if if you will. The M C T I is already addressed for water, so that's not an issue. Um, Sullivan Trail, there's, we suspect there's some failing systems going up that road, and we had that open discussion with the D E P. And they didn't give a definitive answer on whether they would mandate water and sewer together. They did say, just as Jared stated, that if you have existing improved properties, which there are many going up that corridor, that have um sewer systems that are taxed or failing or lots that are unable to have a replacement system, that would certainly weigh in the decision of allowing them to keep onsite water with central sewer. But there was really no definitive, definitive answer, other than if it's a new construction project, if you're running a sewer line to serve a new construction project, then it would have to be water, water up, sewer down. And B C R A still makes use to do that.
And that's more than B W A as well. More than B W A as well.
It just makes so much sense, that line has to go at the same time.
Open that.
Even if we could curb their, their ten foot separation a little bit and get it closer. And there was never ten foot separation in the history of water and sewer, it used to be one and one, you know? That's never been a problem.
The the other difficulty becomes now you have another organization that you're trying to coordinate with. You know, we control our destiny here at Pocono Township, if the five commissioners vote to extend the sewer line, we extend the sewer line. Once you start bringing other organizations in that we don't control, it muddies the water and slows the process down. This has already taken longer than I would prefer, um, but we're we're moving through this pretty well now. In the in the areas that we control, M C T I, for example, because they already have water. That's, you know, that's imminent, so we don't know yet. I think we had a very good meeting and the D E P was actually quite accommodating and supportive, more so than I expected. Right?
Very much.
I mean, they they were quite helpful, so.
We should, we should certainly, if B if B C R A can't do it, we, and they can, but they can fulfill the need, because who knows how much they actually have left in this corridor. If they can fulfill the need, we might be better trying to get that done as part of this Penn Vest loan and then charging them back. Because.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that's an option that we've discussed, but.
And each connection now, they're gonna stay under the two fifty, so there's no water quality permit needed for each and everyone.
It's all gravity fed too.
It's gotta be gravity and then a two fifty E D Us, which we're just under on these sections. So it saved us a lot of time in engineering, it saved time in permitting costs.
Yeah.
It's it's a really good thing for us.
And they were the, D E P was the ones who actually pointed that out to us.
And then they had to have internal discussions to confirm.
Send it up to their boss, but the boss didn't confirm it, yeah. No, I mean, it 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 still goes with the whole concept of we're paying for, you know, flows that we're not using and we really need a differ uh diversification of the type of.
Restrain.
Yeah. All right, as we get closer uh to bid readiness with the police wing, uh, depending on when we get the documents, if we can get it uh by next week from the architect, uh, you'll see uh Jens and Zach either at uh the September fifteenth meeting or the first meeting in October uh to present the debt ordinance for the police wing, the wraparound financing tied to the building purchase. On finally, uh, regional six eleven safety study. Um, Pocono Township, Hamilton Township and Stroud Township have teamed up with the N I P A Alliance on Route six eleven safety study. Um, a lot of times we'll do a comprehensive plan and one township is different than the other township. Uh, but this is a safety study for Route six eleven, and this really takes into consideration all the current Penn Dot projects, our TASSA project, the Route seven fifteen realignment, the turning lane project. Um, the roundabout, the Scott Run, um, the Scott Run ramp realignment, and puts it into a more broad perspective. A lot of times when these studies are done, it does not take into consideration all of the pending projects that's coming as well, so. Um, you should see some updates on our website on that uh next week. Uh, but more than anything else, we'd like to thank the N I P A Alliance and the Pocono Mountain Visitors Bureau for paying the fifty thousand dollar fee uh for the study. So as more uh, as more information comes out, like I said, you'll see it on the website, it's it's actually a really neat link and story, and it shows all the heat maps, uh, the active projects um that are pending, um, all the crash data.
Is is the Hawthorne part of that or no? Is that a dead idea?
The Hawthorne up top in Paradise?
Well, it was Paradise and Pocono.
Yeah, uh, there, yeah, uh, Paradise was not part of the study.
Does or part of the Hawthorne in the study or no?
No, yeah, I mean, ours literally ends right at the casino motel or whatever they call it these days.
We're gonna serve sewer.
No, but part of it's in Pocono, the land, and that's where they wanted.
So, part of the corner, Alan's right, part of the corner of that road, I don't remember the name of it, it does go into Pocono Township, yes.
On on the right side.
Um, if if anybody played the old golf course, it was hole number three, all those, it's along that side. Our.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions? That's all I have.
Anybody have anything for Jared?
Mr. Regal?
I I do have one more thing, uh, sorry. This week will be our last week with uh Lindsay as part of uh zoning with S F M. Um, she is all grown up now and got a big girl job, so we'd like to thank her for all her dedication to Pocono Township. Uh, Paul will be uh taking over in her place and uh some big shoes to fill, but he will do an excellent job as he already is. So, thank you, Lindsay.
Good luck, Lindsay.
Yeah.
Mr. Regal?
Thank you, sir. Uh, just a couple updates. The road work uh in the township is nearly complete. I expect that by tomorrow afternoon, all the roads will have uh finished the fog sealing. Uh, contractor thus far has been uh doing a very nice job. Uh, the communication's been excellent, their work has been neat and clean, and they've been very responsive, so I've been pleased with uh with this contractor, A M S, they've done a nice job. And we really haven't had, knock on wood, we haven't had um any issues with with homeowners, and homeowners have been cooperative. So everybody's working together to get these roads finished. Um, pleased to report that we had a Department of Health inspection last week for Splash Pad. Inspector was very thorough with his inspection, I provided substantial paperwork, including drawings, uh, construction inspections, et cetera, plans, and we passed our inspection and uh, we actually were complimented by the uh health inspector, so that was a a good thing for Pocono Township. And then uh the Cobble Creek Drainage Project, which we've talked about for a couple of meetings, um, we are ninety nine percent finished with that project. It was tricky with the underground utilities, which we've kind of expected, even though we had our eight one one markouts, there were still some surprises up there. But uh we got our Culver pipes in, we got uh swales cleaned out and improved. Now we're just waiting for some heavy rain to see if uh, you know, how well those efforts work. Hopefully, we don't get it, right? We don't want it, we don't want it, um. And as far as the Penn dot six eleven seven fifteen project, you probably see that they've resumed their earthmoving. Um, and they're making some pretty good headway. I haven't spoken recently to their um project representative, but he did tell me when they were coming in, they're gonna continue to work throughout the fall, so hopefully that project will be um mostly complete with the earthmoving by the end of the year.
Can they cut the grass at the intersection?
I continue to ask them to cut the grass.
It's high, can we?
It is, we've actually been in there, what I can do is, I can have.
They get a notice from zoning because they're property owner, right? Property maintenance, grass is high.
Yeah, we could do it and backcharge them.
What's that?
That we could do it and backcharge them, but we'll never get paid.
Uh, it is Penn Dot, so I mean, we could send a letter, but.
Yeah, I think we should, if they're not gonna do it. We've, I think you've asked them, right? We've asked.
Yeah, they'll put the letter in the birdcage.
We can send a letter and see if we get some type of response.
Haven't gotten an update on that yet. That I did, the last time we spoke of this, they told me that a portion of the work that was going to be performed during the road closure had already been performed, so that they were hopeful that the closure of the road would be fewer days than what was originally anticipated. But that's not, you know, they didn't put anything in writing, but that seemed to be a positive, so we'll see, we'll see how that goes. That's it from my report. Uh, any other questions?
Well, right before the meeting, I got a text message from my brother and sister-in-law who live on Hemlock, and they were ecstatic that the 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 fog seal went down, even their dog is happy, because they see, because Belle can walk on the new road.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Tell them thank you for the cooperation.
I will.
Appreciate it. Anybody have anything for Patrick? Moving on. Township events report.
Thank you. Um, August was a great month for events. We finished up our concert series, we had a movie, Kettle Creek Series finished up, those kids, the kids really loved those during the day, and then we had our first ever Pocono Olympics, which was a great hit. I think it went awful lot better than all of us thought it was gonna go. It was a lot of fun. Uh, can't wait to do that again next year. And then we did our first, um, Township wide yard sale. I haven't gotten much feedback on that, so hopefully I hear some more about that and how we can improve it next year and do better, um. Going forward, we have our September events. Saturday, we have our last movie in the park. Uh, it's gonna be Lilo and Stitch. And then we have our second annual food truck festival, September twelfth to the fourteenth. There's a lot of music set up for that. It's gonna be a great weekend. And then our first ever car show is September twenty first, so you could still sign up to put a car in there. And we have a great band for that. They are actually a band who travels around the world and they do oldies and they are absolutely great. So even if you don't come out for the cars, at least come out for the music, but that's all I have.
Where's that gonna be, Jen?
They're all at the Old Township Building at one twelve Township Drive. Right in that front.
And we're gonna have them here.
We've gone back and forth with that. The location of the old property is great, because it's right on six eleven, and if people do forget about the events, they drive by and they go, oh, yeah, that's going on, and they pull in or they see a bounce house out there and do it. Um, we probably can never move, touch a truck here, because of the big machines won't do well on the, uh, parking lot, so that would have to stay down there. But I do plan to move maybe like some movies up this way, things like that at some point. That's all I have.
Anyone else have anything for Jen? Thank you, Jen. Uh, Township Engineer?
Thank you, Rich. Uh, I believe we've covered the sewer pretty well already this evening. Uh, next item on my agenda is Sky High Drive, Pocono Circle Safety Study Update. And before I get to that specifically, I'd like to inform the board, I did attend a P S A Ts uh, seminar within the last two weeks and, uh, one of the topics, and it was actually an excellent presentation, was by Penn Dot regarding traffic calming. Uh, the direction Penn Dot is going and what they're promoting. Uh, just like in Pocono Township, every township is getting requests for speed tables, that type of thing. But for every request you get, then Penn Dot's getting a complaint about speed tables, et cetera, and it, it has gotten to the point, um, I don't know if you're all familiar with it or not, I think Pat is. Penn Dot had a traffic calming publication. It was about ninety-some pages long on their website, excellent source material. They've since taken it down. That's, uh, that's how serious, uh, the situation has become. They're not saying you shouldn't use traffic calming, but they're taking a different approach, and the approach that they are taking, uh, going forward is to implement a traffic calming device. They want you to have on record the results of a traffic count that counts both the average daily traffic through the area of concern and a speed analysis of what the eighty-fifth percentile is. For example, if the speed limit is thirty-five miles per hour and eighty-five percent of the cars are doing, I'm gonna say, and that gives you a little bit of wiggle room, so if eighty-five percent of the cars are doing forty miles per hour or less, then that's gonna say it doesn't need traffic calming, you know, those other fifteen percent, that, that's an enforcement problem. So that's the approach that they're taking, so I just wanted to let everyone know that, uh, that's, that's the new approach. More specifically on Sky High Drive, Pocono Zerf, I, I will have something out, uh, later this week. I think the first thing we need to do there is there's no signage within those areas, and that is the first order of business. I'm gonna get together with our Public Works Department and determine, uh, what signs we need. I do believe there's, uh, some stop signs are needed because it is residential, and there are no speed speed limit signs, or if there's one or two, it's certainly not properly placed, so I believe that is the first order of business for those, those two areas. Uh, the TASSA project, I think we discussed that pretty much too. Uh, I don't have much more to add to that. The T L C walking bridge, I do have two concepts. One is a shorter bridge that would just go from, um, the existing foundations, it's probably only about forty feet long, and then I have another concept where we would go for the basic extent of the whole bridge area, which is closer to eighty-some feet long. I'm in the process of costing those, and then I'll make the presentation uh, with a cost analysis and people can decide what, what they like best. Uh, Turkey Hill, Wednesdays, uh, I did get an email back. They're still waiting for their Penn Dot comments. Uh, they thought they would have them by now, they don't. Uh, they still have not answered my question when they were going to go to construction, but maybe that's a good thing, I don't know. But, uh, I am staying in communication and trying to get answers out of them, so. That's all I have unless there's any questions for me.
John, there's a company called, uh, E T Tectonics. They do fiberglass walking bridges. We've done a bunch for the National Park Service. And they're cheap, they're, they're cheap, they're, they're inexpensive and easy to go up.
Is that the visual that you want at T L C Park? I was led to believe perhaps timber might be the visual.
Make them look like timber.
Okay, I mean, what is the name again, Brad? I'm gonna get to the E T Tectonics.
Send you an email tomorrow.
Okay.
The heaviest piece that they make is ninety pounds, so two guys lift these things and put them in place and build them.
Okay. Well, certainly sounds interesting. I'd like to learn about it for sure.
Anybody else? John, thank you much. Mr. DeVito?
Thank you, Rich. Uh, a few items this evening. The first item, um, is, uh, we're not gonna take action on it tonight, but it has to do with, uh, the Monroe County Industrial Development Authority, uh, refinancing their existing bonds. Uh, and, uh, it ha, in particular, it has to do with Camelback and their TIF, which went into place in twenty thirteen, uh, the tax incremental financing portion of that project. Basically, what they are seeking is to have, there was a covenant in the original, uh, TIF bond agreement whereby Camelback, uh, waived any right to challenge any assessments on their property. That provision has been determined to be unlawful, um, and jeopardizes the tax-free status of the refinanced bonds. Um, I've asked, uh, the, uh, Industrial Development Authority's Bond Council to be available either via Zoom or in person at our next meeting, because I know there's gonna be several questions about, about this, which quite frankly, while I understand generally the concept, uh, I was concerned that I wouldn't be able to answer accurately some of the nuts and bolts of this. Uh, I can tell you that the school district and the county have already agreed to, uh, terminate that covenant.
I'm, I'm not in favor of that. I need to know a lot more.
Oh, yeah, and that's why I, that's why I've invited Bond Counsel to our next meeting to do a presentation.
Yes, Ryan. Is there potential elimination of?
Probably, 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 uh, Lauren, who's working on the project from that firm.
We would have ours dialed in as well.
Laura, Laura, I spoke with Laura in some depth on this. Um, and, uh, yeah, I mean, I, again, there are, there are the nuances that I knew would come up this evening, and I just am not comfortable answering those without having Bond Counsel answer this question.
Is there statute limitations on, on challenging that? Because that was over ten years ago.
Yeah, well, I, it's, there's case law, as I understand it, a recent case law that indicates that such a prohibition to a taxpayer property owner is unlawful, it's illegal, which is the reason they're asking that it be removed, and it also would jeopardize the taxes against the status of the bonds. As I understand it, there's more to it, trust me, I understand there's more to it, and my head started to spin as, uh, we got into detail and I'm, I said, I cannot be the one who presents this, uh, because it turns out that we'll actually wind up making money on the deal. Yeah, yeah, it does.
Because the assessment's gonna go down and we're gonna lose tax revenue.
No, no, no.
It's gonna take them longer to pay their debt.
That, no, no, it, it shortened, it shortens the tip. The number that was thrown at me is about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to the township. If this refinance goes through, because they'll be paying off the bonds early in the refinance. Yeah, exactly. It's, it's a net, it's a net plus to the township, but to get into the detail that I expected tonight, um, I invited them to come to our next meeting.
So if
Yep.
And I can wait for that, but if they pay it off, the tip is over, right? And we start getting our full rate?
Yes.
Uh, I wouldn't say yes that quickly. I mean, I think we get money out of the refinance.
We will get money out of refund, that's three hundred and ninety-five thousand. Three ninety-five nine seventy-four.
Are they still going to twenty thirty-three?
Is it just twenty thirty-three then still?
Correct, yes, it, it will mature twenty thirty-three, uh, with a tentative, uh, payback date of twenty thirty.
Again, there, there, I, I, I fully, I fully appreciate that, and again, I, I just do not feel qualified to get into that. And that's why we have Bond Counsel. That's why the Industrial Development Authority has Bond Counsel. While I wanted to put it on everybody's radar, the documents were included in your packet, so you can take a look at those prior to next meeting and prepare your list of questions.
But ultimately, ultimately, it's been found that you can enforce a voluntary that them voluntary giving up their right.
Yes. That's what I've been told, that's my understanding.
Do you have the case law on that that we could look at?
I will ask, I will ask their Bond Counsel for that case law. I'm sure they'll send it to me. I thought the same thing, but apparently what it does is it infringes on a, that kind of promise infringes on a taxpayer's right to challenge taxes that are assessed. And, and by doing it upfront like that, you get to a point, what happens if county comes in and says, we're gonna make it one hundred times your existing tax rate, and you waive the right to challenge that.
I'm not allowed to talk about it, but the Lerta has the same clause, so is it the same difference?
It, it'll probably be the same difference at the end of the day. But I'll get that case law.
Thank you.
So again, uh, more to put it on your radar to give you a chance to take a look at the documents attached, you come up to speed. Just wanna revisit very quickly the P J J W A. I misspoke at last meeting. Um, I, my calendar was off by a year. It has been in excess of two years uh, that the transfer of the P J J W A assets to the B C R A was accomplished. Jackson is moving forward, uh, and would like very much to terminate the Joint Water Authority uh, and wrap this up. I don't know how the board feels about that at this point. I was wrong. I thought I was still within the two-year window or not.
I'll make the motion for dissolution of P J J W A. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike? Okay, Alan, discussion.
Yeah, Leo, you were gonna look into, we were tied to liabilities for things coming up that we didn't know about.
Two years, two years.
Where, where in the agreement did it say two years? Because I didn't see it.
Any kind of negligence would be two years.
Is that, that's a statute?
That's statute, that's statutory Pennsylvania state law. Negligence is a two-year statute.
But what about another, um, leaching into somebody's well that we didn't know about? Is that?
Well, that could be, I mean, there is potential, it could be for infinity.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's a hidden, but you would expect that anything like that with the B C R A taking over and the maintenance and all the other responsibilities, especially since they're pretty big on leaps, I think Patrick will bear that out.
So, does a joint and several liability go away if we terminate this, or are we still jointly and severally liable?
You're a joint and severally liable. If a claim is made and the claim is valid.
So we're not getting out of anything.
And, and quite frankly, if the, uh, P J J W A doesn't, uh, uh, renew its insurance, and there's no assets left, because it's all been transferred, it's gonna look to Jackson and Pocono anyway.
Yeah, so shouldn't we have insurance?
Well, I think maybe Jared, you can look and see if our insurance would cover that.
I don't think we should dissolve it until we know. I mean, there's no rush.
No, there's no hurry, no hurry, other than Jackson would like to do it before the, uh, premiums uh, come due in January of twenty twenty-six for their insurance, since they don't have any further revenue.
I wanna make sure we're covered and that we, if we need insurance, that we have it. And also, weren't, was the debt paid and was there cash left over that we were?
Debt was paid, and I don't know any, I don't have the answer to the cash, but the debt was paid, debt was paid at closing. There is no debt for P, the B G, the P J J W A debt was paid at closing. That was in fact, in essence, the purchase price.
So weren't we supposed to get the cash at that time? Maybe we got it, I don't know.
I don't know. If, I don't know if you've gotten it, but there was cash, there was some cash on hand that they were gonna hold. Well, because there's additional expenses. You're, you're paying your insurance. Uh, there were bills outstanding, we had, they had to, I say we, they had to collect. So there were some charges that were moving forward. But as to whether or not there's any money left, I can find out, it's not much.
Do we need an accounting of that to know if, if they, um, didn't have enough money, we have to kick in?
If we pay for it, I'm sure they'd agree.
No, I'm saying, are we liable? Do they have things that they're gonna be charging us for when we get out, that they, that they paid on our behalf, because there wasn't enough cash left in there to pay?
Who, who's they?
B C R A.
No. No. That I can tell you, um, I'm, that I can tell you comfortably, no. B C R A took it over lock, stock and barrel, including, uh, future receivables.
And the grant.
And fees, the grant. They paid off the bank. They, they bought it lock, stock and barrel. Uh, any cash on hand or receivables that were uncollected with a property of P J J W A. And those are the funds they've been using to carry it for the last two years.
Why would it carry it if we sold it two years ago? I don't understand.
We didn't dissolve it, and they exist. And they're paying for insurance to cover any liabilities, and they're also trying to collect, or we're trying to collect, any outstanding receivables.
Yeah. I, I just think we need to know where we stand before we dissolve it. I'm gonna make a motion to table it till we know.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
The sewer business update, uh, amended rules and regs, uh, have been circulated, uh, should have those to you by next meeting or first meeting in October. Uh, from a general legal standpoint, um, town, the Pocono Township has joined in the motion for reconsideration on the Heintsey Sunset Hill Shooting, uh, Club. Uh, and we're waiting for word from the Commonwealth Court whether or not they will entertain, uh, reconsideration of that. Uh, update on Archer, we are inching our way closer to trial. No one on their side has reached out for any type of resolution, and the fines continue to increase. Uh, but that's on them. Uh, Learn Road easement, the only outstanding easement left is, uh, Lenny. Uh, and we're working on that. We have discussed TASSA, and I'd like just to take a couple of moments to personally thank Lindsay. Uh, worked with her very closely during her tenure with the township. Uh, not only is she extremely personable, but I found her to be extremely competent. The asset to your new employer, Lindsay, um, is the township's loss. Uh, thank you for everything you've done and best of luck. And any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Any questions? No questions?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we adjourn, for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Bye.